I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the October 2 county commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are in the white folder on the end of the counter. And if you need a listening device, Craig in the front row can help you with that. Move on to routine business. Item number one is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
A motion as second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the meeting minutes from September 24, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion as second to approve the county commission meeting, which is my item A. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is the joint Minnehaha County City of Sioux Falls meeting minutes from the same date.
Second.
Motion as a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,829,984.46. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any comments? No comments. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Three with one recused. Item number four is reports. Item A is Minnehaha County coroner's report from July 2018. Item B is Minnehaha County auditor's report from fiscal year 2017. Those are both on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Second.
Motion as second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognize significant employee anniversaries for October 2018. Carrie Deaver, good morning.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. We have a fairly small list for you today. We'd like to recognize Ferlin Vanderpoel from Facilities who's celebrating five years of service. And Fred Kennicki from Highway who's also celebrating five years of service. And then LeAnn Harrys with the State's Attorney's Office celebrating 15.
I don't suppose we have anybody with us today? I don't see anybody. Okay. Item, thank you. Item C is record volunteers in the county departments for September 2018.
The list is long again this month. You may have noticed we're at 276 in several areas throughout county. So our gratitude goes to them.
Yep. Our kudos out to them, exactly. Item D is consider a motion to approve the enumeration of the pay matrix and authorize the chairman to sign a memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County and the Highway Union and Minnehaha County and the Deputies Association.
This is coming from a review of our pay matrix. We're preparing for our new payroll system which will be implemented next July. And as we were doing that, we thought this would be a good time to renumber our pay matrix. You might remember that we used to have a pay matrix with steps one through 18. But we eliminated steps one and two through a couple of years to increase the base pay. So we have this awkward matrix right now that's numbered three through 18. Since we're going into this new payroll prep process, we'd like to clean that up and go back to a pay matrix where step one is actually the first step. So we're requesting your approval on renumbering it. And although the pay matrix isn't necessarily part of our contract with the bargaining units, we do want to make it clear that the intent here is simply to renumber the matrix. It won't impact any employees' pay. It'll just mean that if you're at a step four, for example, you become a step two. So the MOUs are to make sure that agreement is clear that nobody's employee or no pay will be impacted by this.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Is there a motion or questions or motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
There are motion as second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And item E is a special commission action to approve the hiring of Dusty Ballinger as for the mechanical team member at the Highway Department.
The last item I have for use is request for outside salary policy hire for Dusty Ballinger. The intent is to hire him at a current step eight, which would become step six by the time that he's hired. The reason that we're requesting this higher than salary or normal hiring range is due to Dusty's experience and also some difficulty we've had recruiting this area. DJ is here too if you have any additional questions.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie. Are there any questions for DJ? For motion?
Move approval, second.
A motion as second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie. Item number six is abatements approved recommended for approval. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is a planning and zoning request. Item A is a first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice for rezoning number 18-07. Mr. Anderson, good morning.
Good morning. Scott Anderson, county planning director. And you're, many of you are familiar with this rezoning request. And for the benefit of the audience and the viewing public, I'll give you a general explanation. This is a request to rezone approximately 3.21 acres from agriculture district to a planned development. The property is located at 7701 West Maple Street, which is approximately one mile west of the city limits on Maple Street. This has gone before the planning commission back in July and it was recommended approval by both the city and the county planning commissions at a joint meeting. This item was heard at last Tuesday's county commission, city council joint meeting. And at that time, it was continued for a month. And upon advice or a recommendation or counsel from our state's attorney, we are now re-advertising the continuations of these hearings. So this has been before you once and you're pretty familiar with it. I'm asking to have authorized the auditor to publish the hearing notice for, I believe it's, let's see here, October 23rd at 5:00 PM at Carnegie Town Hall. And at that time, we will take another run at this and see if a decision could be made. We'll have a public hearing and we'll go from there. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? I need a motion for publication.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, I'd like to ask you, Madam Chair, when you would prefer to discuss this issue, if it's now or maybe towards the end under old business?
Maybe old business would be good. That would be great. I have a motion as second to authorize the publication. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jeff. Excuse me, Scott. Now, let's see. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. If anybody would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Representative Larry Zickman from District 14 here in Sioux Falls. And I want to tell you that it's an honor and a pleasure to be up here with you this morning to bring you some great news. I'll introduce Mr. Terry Paulson here in just a minute. But we have some outstanding news with, for the new veteran cemetery that will be going in on the northeast part of the city, as you know. Number one, I want to thank you for your support. I carried the bill in the House. I was a prime sponsor in the House, which I was, I'm a veteran, so, and I'm very, very proud of our veterans. And one of the things I have to say about your legislature is the fact that the veterans in our military just have an outstanding support from your legislature. And that is, that's not true in all, in all states and all areas, et cetera. So, but I know my time is limited and I wanted to say thank you, Terry. Mr. Terry Paulson will bring you up to date on the, on the news. Where we're at, I'm also, I have the opportunity to serve on the endowment committee. And that, that endowment committee, which is underneath the South Dakota Community Foundation, is charged with the responsibility of raising up to $3 million by 2023 for the maintenance and operation of that cemetery. So, and he'll inform you where we are with that. In fact, we're meeting tomorrow with the South Dakota Community Foundation and trying to lay out some more marketing materials. I did hand out a brochure to you. It's the first brochure that came out from the Department of Veterans Affairs. And we'll be in tonight and Terry, again, we'll tell you, I shouldn't tell you all this because it's, it's his, it's his bailiwick. I have to tell you also that from my point as a taxpayer here, as one of your legislators, number one, I'm very, very proud to be a legislator from the Sioux Falls area and District 14. But it's just been a, just been a great communication between the South Dakota Veterans Affairs Group, their committee, and they have just been a great, great group to work with along with the, with the county commission and with the city commission. So your legislators voted this bill in. There wasn't any opposition to it. All of the legislators voted for it, even the 17 in the Joint Appropriations Committee, which is a super tough committee to try to get through. And, but they found a way. There is a way. Your, your Veterans Affairs Committee just, just worked diligently and great. Been over 20 years since we've been trying to get this thing through. This is going to be good for our veterans and their families in South Dakota and for the state of South Dakota and of course, for the city in this area in, in South Dakota and especially the eastern area of the state. So we're very, very proud of it to have brought this in and especially to the Sioux Falls area. So Terry will, Terry will come up and bring you up to date with where we are with it and the outstanding news. So Terry.
Thank you, Senator, Representative Zickman.
Good morning, commissioners. It's been a while since I briefed you where we stood on the cemetery. Again, my name is Terry Paulson. I'm president of the South Dakota Veterans Council. Served 31 years in the military myself and, and am proud to continue serving the veterans of this great state. Couple of quick things, and I know my time is brief here. The endowment that Larry had talked about, that was part of our testifying before the appropriations committee out in Pier. And part of the agreement was, can I say? That the South Dakota Veterans Council established an endowment fund to help offset any ongoing costs that may be associated with the cemetery once it's built. We agreed to a $3 million goal on that so far. We are just over $400,000 that we have raised and we're totally excited about that because it's only been a couple of months since Senate Bill 91 was passed. So we're well on our way to, to establishing our goal of raising those funds that will be put into the South Dakota Community Foundation and will never be touched other than for the maintenance and care of that cemetery. So we're super excited about that and we feel very comfortable that, that we'll reach that goal by 2023. Probably the biggest news that, that came out was yesterday. Got a phone call from the Secretary of Veterans Affairs. We'd been waiting on the priority list from the National Cemetery Administration out in DC to see where we did come out on the priority listing for the grant applications that are available for cemeteries. I have the list in front of me and Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County was number one for the establishment of any state veteran cemetery in the nation. And that is, having never been on the list ever, ever before, we certainly knew that we had a good shot at that given the fact that the unserved veteran population that we have in the radius in, in around Sioux Falls, which encompasses 42,497 veterans and their families that, that are not included in that. So we are, I can't even tell you how excited we are when we seen that list because that will then give us the opportunity to receive that $6 million grant to bring that cemetery to Sioux Falls. 15 October is a big date for us. Talking with the secretary, he and through the governor's office, they will need to submit a letter accepting that grant. We fully expect that to happen. And once that happens, the folks from the Cemetery Administration will be lining up some meetings and coming out and we'll be checking on the land and making sure that we have all the processes in place to, to make sure that happens. Tonight is the first reading at the city council for the transfer of that land. The language between the lawyers, between the city and, and the governor's office, they had some language issues. We finally got that all worked out. So that'll all be presented to the city council tonight for the first reading. And as I said, we're super excited that, as Larry had mentioned, this, this has been in the works for over 20 years and we couldn't be more happy to just keep checking the, the boxes to make sure that this happens. And we are certainly well on the way to do that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for Terry at this point? Commissioner Bird?
Well, first of all, thank you for being here and I don't think any of us want the five-minute limit to stop you from talking here. I think we'd all be better off if everyone had served in the, in the service at some point in their life. And it seems like fewer and fewer people do. How common is it for a new cemetery to be formed somewhere in the United States? And are we, are we having a more of a struggle than others? Or it looks great that we're going to be, you know, the number one pick for this year. But does this happen often? And, you know, where, where else is this, are they trying to get this to happen?
That's a great, great question. Having, looking at the list right here, there are 98 other states requesting this grant. And some, I believe the first 17 are requesting a grant for an expansion of their existing cemetery, which we'll be eligible for too, once we establish one. But the rest, from 18 to 98, are other states requesting a cemetery. And not only is that the issue, the issue is getting passed through the state legislation and the state knowing that they have to maintain that cemetery. And that was our, probably our biggest hurdle. And as Larry had mentioned, we had passed it unanimously in the House and the Senate and the governor signed it into, into law. So the, the long answer to your question is there's a lot of states wanting to do this and we just feel very, very fortunate that the hard work.
Congratulations to you. And I can't imagine being a legislator voting against this.
We already mentioned what the appropriations committee can, they can make you feel pretty humble. I was testified many times before them, but kudos to them and the whole state legislation that they seen the need for this. And like I said, 42,000 veterans in a 75-mile radius, not to include their spouses and/or children that would be eligible to be buried there. So we're excited about that.
Additional questions for Terry? Terry, thank you. And Larry, thank you for carrying the legislation, for doing work for us. I think we have quite a few veterans in this room, so.
Did you mention that they've hired an engineer and architect?
I didn't. And Larry just brought it up real quick. There has been an engineering firm that has been working on the land already, testing the soils, making sure that, you know, they ain't running into any issues or anything that, and that's stockwell engineering. They were awarded that contract to do the design and construction. My guess is they're probably putting renditions together. We'll all gather together and make sure that it's a beautiful facility like we all want it to be. And, and so that work is in process already too, so.
Thank you very much for the update. We would appreciate updates as they go along.
Finally, I just want to say it's, it's my intent, whether I'm, I hope I get reelected. But if I'm not reelected, it's still my intent, because I am on the endowment committee, to bring new people up to date periodically, where we are with it, where we are with the money, because that's very, very important. The intent is here to try to get to that 3 million. And it's my intent, if I ever have anything to do with it, to go up somewhere between 3 and 10 so we don't have to ever come back and ask the taxpayers in South Dakota to help maintain, put money in to maintain it. I'm sure they will. Because it's now state fund, uh, state property, because the governor has signed off on that. So, but it's my intent to try to keep you informed. So that's, you'll see me here once in a while.
And that's okay. We have a good platform here because we do have viewers that watch our program. So you're reaching more than just this room, so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to comment that Larry has been here before. And previously, I was his constituent in District 14. He's still our constituent here in Minnehaha County. And I think anytime we get a legislator come to see us in action here at a county commission thing, come during our budget. You'll, it'll look worse in appropriations, but.
I've been told that.
Please come back and we look forward to that.
This is very, very early, but one of the things that I plan to do is to work, if I get back in this year, is to work to try to get some extra funds for the counties. I know, all of us know that you're hurting and we just need to try to do something. It's, maybe it's possible with, I shouldn't say this because the governor told us not to talk about the Wayfair project. But maybe it's possible to do some of those. But you've got to get committed finances to come in to help you. That's just, that's just one of the things. So.
We have ideas for you. We have plenty of ideas for you.
I'm going to be committed to two, two, three things. The military, the veterans. And I'm going to try to work something out, to do something with the counties. And seven through 12th grade vocational technical education training. So that's going to be some of my priorities this next year. So, thank you for your support. Dean, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, commissioners. Nikki Gronley, 24620, 479th Avenue, Del Rapids. And more of a statement this morning, just asking you guys to go to bat for those folks who are trying to put in that wedding facility west of Sioux Falls. I understand it's in a joint jurisdiction area and that the city is not in support. But this body is really the place where our rural residents have representation. And so I'm just encouraging you to please help those folks out. Rural residents have a right to have small businesses and prosperity too.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. With that, we'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a presentation of the history of the Lyons family and the fairgrounds. Dean Extehl.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Dean.
In most cases that I've been here, it's not to explain what happened or how the Lyons Fairground got started, but generally it was because of a lawsuit or an embezzlement or some of those kind of goofy factors. So at this time, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm probably one of the last chain of the Winona Axle Lyons families. Take that back. I've turned these reins over to my son, Scott Extehl. And hopefully, he can remember some of the things that's happened in the distant timeframe that, that I was in to know what happened at the fairgrounds. So originally, my father got out of the service World War I, Muse d'Argonne. So I thank the veterans for the Veterans Hospital. I'm a veteran of the Korean conflict, conflict, I'll call it that. But my father was in the Muse d'Argonne Battle of Shadow Theory in France. So he came back in the service with not much hope for anything. So he found out that there was a homestead rights in Canada. Well, with nothing in your pocket, some teams of horses and some wagons and personal property, they made that venture to Canada, Edmonton, Alberta, from the Bend, Oregon area, which is 900 and some miles by wagon and personal property and their horses. Believe it or not, they were able to apply for Canadian citizenship. And both families, my mother's side, they each got a quarter of land to improve. Canada at that time was hurting for population, of course. It was a big, wide, open country and we apparently didn't realize that till we applied for homestead rights because the place was 80 miles northwest of Edmonton, Alberta, Canada. So they had 80 miles yet to go to find out where they were going to live. So anyway, they went up there and improved those two quarters. And in mid 1920s, late 20s, Mrs. Lyons had lost her husband. She had turned on, over all of her business operations to her other nephew, Hal Ranny. And they came to Canada to convince my father to come down into the great state of South Dakota, Lincoln County. Shouldn't even mention that here. Just south of Sioux Falls on Cliff Avenue. She had a place for us to farm. Didn't work. It took another two years and another trip with lots of candy for the kids up there at Christmas time to convince them to come back to the state of South Dakota. So in March of 1936, '37, we made that trip by bus from Barhead, which is the closest little town to where our farm was at, to Edmonton, Edmonton to Sioux Falls. And we were greeted by Mrs. Lyons and all the rest of the relatives. And we really looked out of place with our Canadian farm suits and bib overalls and, should say, rubber boots and whatever had, that looked kind of peculiar, but I'm sure the city kids that were our cousins. So anyway, they relocated us with Mrs. Lyons's home just south of Lyon Park. We stayed there for a few months as my father and my brother and mother were trying to get the farm south on Cliff Avenue, ready for being habitable. I'll just put it in a very nice sense of the word. I told my father after I'd seen the place and I was just turned six in March, I said, "Dad, I think it's time we head back to Canada." No grandpa and grandmas, you know, in a completely different part of the country. So we struggled in Harrisburg community area and improved the farm. And Mrs. Lyons took good care of us. She also let us use the south half of the present fairground from the railroad tracks north of about what the expo building is as our summer pasture for our cattle, which really helped us because we had to establish everything at the farm at Harrisburg. We did that for two years and then the fairgrounds expanded. 4H really started to take over in the 30s. And my brother and I were members of the Lincoln, there I go again, using the Lincoln County Fair, County Fair as a stepping spot to the WH Lyon Fair. And that's where we brought our Chester White Hogs for showing. So I don't know how far you want me to go and delve into any more of the history. It's how we got here, why we're still dedicated to what she really dedicated to, the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County. I don't know all the tax facts of how this has affected you folks in your budgeting. I have kept in touch with the fairgrounds for many, many years. I've been turned over as the watchdog of the family for the WH Lyon Fairgrounds. So as you can remember through embezzlements and lawsuits and whatever, we've had some unbelievable exposure to a lot of elements. So the watchdog I have been, the most memorable people I've had to work with are your present CEOs that you have right now, Mr. Halwith and Joe Veal. We've seen improvement immensely. As soon as the ladies touched, especially got involved with the fair, with flowers in the entryway and pots and, you know, general cleanup. Then I think Mr. Wick got the word that he better get with it or whatever. And so we have a great deal of thanks for them. I've had a considerable thought on why the Minnehaha County Commission and the commission of the city of Sioux Falls and the Commission of the City of Sioux Falls have not got together, Chamber of Commerce, you name it, the money that has been brought in through the fairgrounds. From what I understand, Minnehaw County does not get a fair shake on proceed. So as an old, long line of error, let's keep this thing going. We're proud of what's happened out there. We're very proud of Mrs. Lyons to have the fourth thought to go ahead and give that many acres to the county for a fair that, as I said, my son will take over. I'm sure he's, he's a veteran also and I'm sure he'll do a good job of keeping an eye on things out there at the fair. So I thank you for the opportunity. It's a pleasure at a time like this where we have no big bones to pick with anyone. So thank you, Ren to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Axtell. Are there any questions for him?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Scott Anderson just left the room, but he pointed out to me that the family also donated the land that Wall Lake is on, to the county, and that's another park that was given us and.
Excuse me again, I guess I should have brought the list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lyon Park, of course, her home was moved from where the president Washington High School Civic Center is now, was brought up to the lots on the south end of Lyon Park, which was donated and then the History Club and you name it. I should have brought my list, I've got all of that, but I didn't know if we'd get in. Palisade State Park. The park at Hartford, South Dakota, the Girl Scout Camp at Wall Lake. And oh, I'm drawing blanks. So, but she had property that Mr. Lyon had acquired through whatever means, we don't know, through the dirty 30s and proceeded to give it all away. I wish I could pass that legacy on to my family and our both counties. Thank you. More questions, I'll give it a shot.
Commissioner Barth, did you have another comment?
Thank you, Mr. Barth.
Yeah, I would like to thank you too and your family. It's amazing that we've had this gift that keeps, keeps on giving more or less. The Wall Lake Park is beautiful, every one of them. I wasn't aware of all the different places that she gave along, but what a wonderful legacy to your family that their name is on the Sioux Empire Lyons WH Fairground and what a beautiful place. And I'm happy that it is a part of the county. Yes, it costs us money at times, but it's, it was, it's an amazing gift. It is an amazing gift, so thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Yes, at least the basic price for the county was cost free.
Yeah, that's right.
That's a legacy that you folks have to maintain. Everyone, every family has a legacy, hopefully of something to leave to their families. Mrs. Lyon was way ahead of her time when she used Winona Actel Lyon as her wedding name. So she has been one of the four person people that has kept this WH Lyon Actel name where it is today. So we really and truly hope to keep that Actel name alive for a few years yet. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair.
Commissioner.
You know, a couple other significant folks with the fair are here. We've got Art Nordstrom, we got Scott Wick, we have Joe Beal. I wonder if any of them wanted to comment on this.
Any comments from the fair board or Scott?
Good morning, Scott Wick, President CEO of the WH Lyon Fairground. Yeah, we, you know, Dean stops in monthly, if not a couple of times in a month and makes sure he's up to speed on what's going on and keeping me in line and giving my wife a call if he thinks I need a little direction. So it was, it was a wonderful gift back, starting in the 30s with the different tracks that were gifted. And I didn't know about Wall Lake or Palisade, so that was educational for me. I, when we first moved to Sioux Falls, when I was less than a year old, we lived across from Lyon Park in a house that they had names, it was called Lyon View. So I've been, I was there for about five years, so that's interesting as well. But it is, it is a great gift. It's a large parcel of land and we've come a long way and we've got some new exciting things that are also coming down. When I give my report about the fair, the fair is very successful. We had some weather challenges, but luckily they happened after the concerts had taken place the first four days of the fair. And then the remaining Tuesday through Saturday were very favorable weather wise and very successful overall. So we're happy to let you know we'll be reporting on that. And then with our new agreement with you folks, our, our report is due sometime before the end of November. So we will be getting that to you in a nice presentation and get you up to speed on everything that's going on and some exciting things in the future. So we appreciate all of your support. We appreciate the Lyon family and the Axtell family as well for their involvement, their gift to the county and the region. And we look forward to being good stewards of, of that and, and your support as well moving forward.
Thank you, Scott.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Art, did you have a comment? Okay, all right.
Art's kind of shy.
With that, we'll move on to item number 11, Consider a Motion to Accept Funding Under the County Reimbursement Program for the Improvement of the Conditions of Confinement in the Juvenile Detention Center. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. I'm coming before you this morning after kind of a whirlwind situation. We were notified on a Monday that there was going to be some money available for us to apply for as a detention center to improve the conditions of confinement for youth in our custody. We put together a proposal quickly of things that we felt we needed and, and then a couple of items that we were hoping to implement some new programming to help with visits for youth that are from outside our county. So we put together our, our list and presented it to the state by the deadline. And the next day, they told us we were approved. So we, we asked for mattresses, pillows, some radios, AM/FM radios for the youth to listen to in their rooms, and then three tablets so that we could try to develop a Skype type visit situation for the, the parents that can't travel to visit their youth. And all of that was approved, so I'm coming before you today to request your approval to take that reimbursement and buy those items.
Thank you, Jamie. And I was aware of this as his liaison, he let me know as soon as his things started moving along, so. Is there any questions for Jamie or look for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is Commission Liaison Reports. Commissioner Bender.
I just, as a brief update, the HAB Board met last week. We hadn't met in a little while since Stacy Teasen had resigned. So it was an opportunity for us to get back together and kind of share some ideas that we had about possibly doing a little further research to make sure that that, that that board kind of knows what direction it wants to go before we advertise and possibly fill that position. And so we had a great discussion and I think that we'll be coming back with some ideas and requests for approval probably in the next month.
Okay, Commissioner Kersky.
Last week, was it Thursday? Commissioner Barth and I met with the mayor and Teresa Staley and members of the Multicultural Center Executive Board for our semi-annual.
Intergovernmental.
Intergovernmental, yeah, meeting. So a very interesting, the mission of the Multicultural Center, I think, is being carried out, carried out in a fantastic way. I love the updates, hearing about the work they're doing specifically with youth and with people trying to assimilate themselves into our community. So kudos to what they've done and what they're doing. Next Monday is a Wasiipi, and I believe, did Christie say they're having like had 1,100 people for dinner last year? So very, very well attended. A Wasiipi is basically a powwow. I haven't been to one in a number of years. I used to go to them when I was a kid and very moving spiritual experience. So if you have the opportunity to anybody, it's open to the public and it's free. So there's a dinner and a Wasiipi starting at 6 o'clock at the community center next week.
Madam Chair, I would just to comment that I've been on that board since Mayor Munson was mayor. And, you know, there, there may be issues, but I don't think I've seen them doing any better than this ever over these years. The Multicultural Center under Christie seems to be doing very well.
Thank you. Any additional reports? Any new business?
Madam Chair, did we want to discuss our planning and zoning issue at this point or under old business?
Let's put it under old business if that's okay. If there's no new business, we'll go into old business. And Commissioner Barth, you had a comment to bring in?
Well, I think we were all there last week when we had our, a board of meeting with the city council where the city council was there minimally. And when one council person expressed opposition to this wedding barn in the rural area, it was clear we weren't going to be able to pass it. And if, if it were to be turned down, then it would have to be a six month wait before it could be approved. And let me say that I personally felt some urgency about trying to get this done because I think there was a hope that concrete could be poured and this project could be underway yet this calendar year as opposed to 2022 or something. And, you know, I guess we're hoping that in a month, a couple more city council people will be present. And, you know, even if it's a tie under those conditions, the mayor would be able to break the tie. And I think he, he didn't express anything at the meeting, but I think he's probably not opposed to it. There seems to be an invisible plan to control the county that has never been made clear to us as the elected officials in the county. I think Scott maybe has heard from the city about their plan to micromanage activities out there. But I'm a little, you know, Madam Chair, you expressed the opinion that we don't have to have this three mile area of, of joint jurisdiction. And it seems to me I, I'm not favoring that, but there's some famous phrase that goes something like, "When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another," and to assume among the powers of the state the separate and equal station to which, but blah, blah, blah. Anyway, maybe we have to consider the idea of declaring independence from the city planning department, if not from the city. And, you know, we've always operated in good faith and, you know, we're, we're happy when we have development in the county that gives people five jobs. The city is looking for projects that are 200 jobs. And unfortunately, too many of those jobs that they get are low wage jobs out there in, in the city. But I think this is the kind of thing that is pretty innocuous. I think an event center in a park like surrounding would not be abhorrent to me as a neighbor in a residence and, you know, any more than a church. Anyway, I, I was pretty ticked off. At the same time, I think that potentially we could work harder to communicate with city planning and city counselors on this and, and work something out.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. I know, Commissioner Kersky.
If I could add, you know, you made a comment about the mayor breaking a tie. Unfortunately, the problem is for rezoning with the city, it takes more than a simple majority. It takes a, it takes five out of eight to approve it. So there is no tie vote there. So it does take a more than a simple majority for them to approve a rezone. So it does complicate the issues a little bit more. And, and the joint jurisdictional zoning, I get it. I mean, there was a time when out on 12th Street, a county property basically surrounded by the city, a young man wanted to put up a fireworks stand. And it took both entities to, to approve that. But, I mean, we're talking basically county property within or adjacent to city limits. So, I mean, I see where there is a definite need, where input from both parties is appropriate. But when it comes to the voting, it does change things quite a bit because it does take more than a simple majority.
I, I guess that would be a question I would, you're possibly right, but I would, that's something I would like to know for sure since we don't have, that's not here. And so in the joint jurisdiction, does that still ring true? So I'll just have the state attorney look at that because that's an important point to know as we move forward. Did you have a comment, Commissioner Bender?
Well, I just was going to say that, I mean, it was unfortunate that we were in a situation where there were somebody who had to recuse themselves on the city side and then they were, they were short votes. But I think that the action we took was in the best interest of the property owners. And I'm cautiously optimistic, I guess. I'm quite hopeful that when we have a full complement of city counselors there and we have an opportunity during the next month to visit with them and help them to, to see that the area that they're talking about is pretty far out in their plan and a lot can happen. I think it was council member Erickson that pointed out a plan is just a plan and a lot can change. And I don't disagree with Commissioner Barth at all that this is a fairly innocuous use. I mean, I can understand that neighbors might be, you know, might have concerns. I mean, when we looked at the Blue Haven Barn, there were some neighbors that had concerns. But I think that it has proven to be very successful and they've been able to coexist quite happily. And so, you know, I, I think I'm certainly very much in favor of that project and, and like I said, cautiously optimistic that in the next month, we'll be able to get it passed. I, I recognize it's difficult for the landowner who was, you know, we had already kind of scheduled, the planning commission had scheduled a kind of a hurry up meeting to try to help them get in the ground. And, you know, there's, there's costs and opportunities that get lost when government kind of drags its feet a little bit. But I hope in the end, it all works out appropriately.
And I was told that every, there was a huge group there and those people were all, there were the neighbors all in support of putting this barn up. And so really, the only opposition we had was one person from the planning, well, not one person, but a couple of people. It was a very low number of people that were in opposition and did have the neighborhood's support. But, yeah, I'm the same with you. I hope that this is moved through and I feel sorry for the, the family who got put through the wringer of political stuff.
Madam Chair. I would just point out that there are things that maybe we could do to make, make it work better for the city. For example, if we required it to be plumbed so that it could easily be changed over from septic to sanitary sewer at some future date, 20 years down the road. And, you know, I think anytime there's sort of a dispute between a bureaucrat and a citizen, it's us elected folks that are the interface. You know, we could have, for example, a citizen with a nuisance being pointed out by the planning department. But we interpret that, the bureaucrats don't get the final say. The elected officials get the final say. And so when it's, that might be the guideline, it might even be the rule, but there are always going to be exceptions. And I think there might be some things we can do with the city to make this less of a burden for them.
Thank you. Additional comments on that subject? I would also, maybe Scott, you could just comment on that the Hagy corner situation has been resolved. Just anyone who was interested in hearing about this in the past, they're not going to know about it unless we tell them, so.
Indeed. Kevin Hookman sent out a memo to the county commission yesterday in the commission office and state's attorney. As you know, we've been working closely with Ron Hagy, which he lives west of Del, of the Del Rapids Interstate 29 exit, about a mile. And we have been working with him to abate a nuisance. And luckily, we have reached a point where it is substantially cleaned up. The vehicles are all licensed, they're operable, they're not in the right of way. You know, there was a small, in the scheme of things, a, a small pile of shingles that probably needed to be cleaned up. But we're not going to pursue, proceed with a forced abatement over just that. So it, it's cleaned up. So we also notified Mr. Hagy and continued to tell him that this needs to be an ongoing situation. Once you get it cleaned up, let's try and keep it cleaned up. Don't put the vehicles in the right of way, you know, work on educating everyone involved. So it, it had a successful outcome.
Thank you. Any additional old business? Any additional old business? Look for a motion to recess the county commission meeting. We will be reconvening in a few minutes for executive session. So is there a motion to recess?
That's my motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are recessed.